I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands firm, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open the meeting to the public at this time. Everybody who wishes to address the board may do so. Anyone who wishes to address the board will have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of previous meeting, we all have copies. Is there any additions or deletions?
Motion to accept the minutes I've written.
Motion by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Hopper. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual sign of aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. We don't have copies of the bills. Is there any additions or deletions?
Yes, sir. We have one addition that was received today, a bill that was received and we put it, we added it, it was to Wilson and Wilson, our electrical engineer for services he's provided during the past 12 months. That's the only other addition.
Make a motion to pay the bills amended. Second item.
Motion by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual sign of aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondence?
It's not on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, but we just received a letter this evening from Dennis Roberts, Secretary of the Montgomery Post Hook and Ladder Company. It reads, Dear Mayor and Trustees, we wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved for our company for its probationary period of six months. His name is Jerry Baker, 133 Lake Street, Rouse's Point. Please act on this member as soon as possible, respectfully yours.
I'll move to adjourn Mr. Baker for attorney.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Hopper. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual sign of aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Report of Mayor and Trustees and Trustees. I have a couple of things here tonight. One, I have a legal notice. Notice is hereby given as the Board of Trustees of the Rogers, Ross's Point, Plutton County, New York, as on the third day of November 2003, passed a resolution designating the office to be voted on for next village election. A copy of the complete resolution is filed, whereas next general election for the office to be held March 16, 2004, and one of the Board of Trustees adopted a resolution designating the office to be filled such election end terms. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Rogers, Ross's Point designated following offices are vacant at the end of their current official year to be filled at the village election held on March 16, 2004. Mayor turned two years. Trustee, two years. Trustee, two years. If further results of the village clerk is hereby directed to publish the resolution in full and prospered press to publish. This resolution should take effect immediately following the question foregone at the duly put or vote a vote by with the results. We'll call vote. No, that's a motion. I put in the motion, I need to say.
Second.
Second by trustee Menard. We'll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hopper.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And I have, go authorize the clerk, I make a motion to authorize the clerk to publish this.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hopper. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Have a proclamation, whereas if you read the paper today that Annie Calhoun has been named caregiver, she lives here in Ross's Point, so I have a proclamation, whereas Annie Calhoun has been named caregiver of the year 2003 by the Caregivers Resource Center, and whereas Annie has devoted her life to her family and community in a non-savage and loving manner, whereas Annie has provided great compassion to those less fortunate throughout her life, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of Rogers, Ross's Point wish to thank and congratulate Annie Calhoun for her contribution and care to the many people whose lives she has touched and where it will, and further be resolved that George J. Rivers, Mayor of Rogers, Ross's Point will present Annie with this proclamation honoring her and outstanding efforts. Signed by me. And I have one other thing. As the board knows, I attended an economic development meeting in Albany on Municipal Electric, and the outcome in that meeting was very, very positive for us in that power authority and the Economic Development Corporation of the State of New York are going to partner in promoting the 41 municipals for economic development. That is countrywide and international. Also, the power authority is going to, I forget the term to use, but hook onto the Municipal Electric's website and any village website so that if somebody gets onto the power authority and looks at it, they can go to anybody with this. They opened up the power for jobs, we opened it up, whereas it was given strictly for industry. Minimum requirements for industry was 50 people, and they had to give us an estimate of the amount of power they're going to be using. It's now opened up to large shopping centers because they hire more than 50 people in most cases. Going to be opened up to hotels and motels that hire more than 50 people, 50 or more. It's going to be opened up so that it's not so tight. Very strict of the industrial. Everything was very positive in that meeting. We met with the President of Power Authority, and I came out of there feeling pretty good about it. I thought it was pretty good. We've got the minutes back, and we have to go through, if they, if we find nothing wrong with them or whatever we want to add, then it will be sent to the, finally sent to the Board of Trustees, the Power Authority, and the Executive Board of Municipal Electric, and then it will take place. This all came about because of the governor, and while I know we haven't got that yet from the governor, but the Board of Trustees voting to extend our hydropower to 2025. One of the things that had to be done was economic development and energy conservation, and we're doing both. That's all I have at this time. Trustee Menard.
First item on the agenda is I'd like to make a motion to request an executive session to discuss the pending litigation.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Penfield. We'll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hopper.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye.
And my second item is just an update on the substation. We did, had a power outage last week, last weekend, and we ran into a minor problem when we transferred one transformer over. Tried to bring one transformer online, and we found a problem with one of the other transformers. But that will be fixed within the next couple of weeks, and then all three of the transformers will get, be back in line, and there will not be another power outage, be very minor, five, 10 minutes thing. Other than that, everything else is great.
Thank you, trustee Menard. Trustee Hopper.
First item on the agenda is a notification completion of the linemen's apprentice training by Robert Tim Clark. Tim has completed the program, and we've got it approved for, how long? How long?
Four years.
Four years now at this time, so congratulations to him and the rest of that program. Second item is a discussion on the civic center parking lot, and we have a revised copy including the south side of the rec. center, which does increase the number of spaces that we have to over 100. So, any discussion on that, Bud?
Just on the south side of the civic center, you ought to think about in the winter, you would have snow and ice coming off that roof on that end, and whether or not you'd want to have the parking there during the winter. This is something to be done.
Again, we won't be doing this job until next summer, and we do our best to see that the only cost to us is the paint. Do you need, what kind of, this time, this final?
Sir?
Do I have a rule that we do the heads with painting of the parking lot here at the civic center in the summer of 2004?
Second item. Motion made by trustee Hopper, seconded by trustee Menard. Any discussion?
I just want to know how often we'll have to repaint this, every couple of years?
Probably, probably every couple, maybe three. It ain't going to get that much use, not like the highway.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? There being no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by your usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Water tank, update?
No, just on the water tank, our bacteriological test results came back negative for the water tank, so we disinfected it. And now the water from the tank, the one and a half gallon down is, is being used, flushed the new 16-inch transmission main. And once that is flushed, we are going to refill the tank again and do another disinfection of the 16-inch transmission line, and we'll be looking at going online. We are waiting for one more test also to come back on the tank. Since it's got fresh paint in there, we need to do a chemical test to make sure that there isn't any contamination of the water due to the fresh paint. So, that's at the lab, we should know any day now on that test. Questions?
Don, did John Curran get any information back on the circuiting piping at this point? Do you know?
No, at this time I have nothing new on the circuiting piping, but I will ask him about that for tomorrow.
Do you know what the situation is doing at the village office when the parking lot air will be back to normal or whatever?
That's a function of when we get the 16-inch transmission main flushed and has a successful bacteriological test, then we can close that all down. So, right now, you know, next week at the earliest, but that's what it's made, it's made be okay that we don't have to open it up again because of something from the part or partly because of the other bad tests.
Why they don't like it during the next couple of weeks?
I would say so, yeah, yeah. Contractor wants to button that up, everybody wants to button it up, so I don't think we'd go much longer.
Now, will they, the place where they have to gun the hole, will that be paved this year or will they leave it?
I don't know right now whether that was to be paved or not. Certainly we have it filled in by the 21st when the batch plants are closing, so possibly the provision of base course down there, but I'll check on that too.
Thank you.
Now, what's the timeline on this whole project winding down? Because I know there's work that's got to be done in the tank.
Yes.
For E room, and there's work that's got to be done where we keep the DE.
In the plant, that's right. Contracts three and four have barely gotten started. I know the electrician is looking to be here next week. I'm thinking, I haven't seen the latest schedule on that, but just, we're looking at contracts three and four going probably to January or so. There's not a lot of work, January, February should be done. And then that would be after the water project really except for any final food and that type of thing. And of course, the old tank, when we're going to dismantle that, but that would be after the water project.
Did we find anything more on the fence?
Pardon me?
Did we find anything more?
We haven't heard back yet, we're waiting here on the, if the security system can be any quick. I happened to be in another community over the weekend, and they have a water tank similar to our existing one, and they have nothing for that. And I just don't know how to help the department handle that.
Different health department?
Pardon me? No, I, no, it didn't discount it.
Yeah, but I just say, oh, it's just got, oh, I'm sorry.
Would you see?
Shouldn't it? Maybe by state.
Well, I wondered if they may have some type of security system. Okay, happy to announce that finally we have been able to publicly announce the formation of a steering committee for the downtown revitalization project. As you know, we've had to kind of keep this under wraps until we got permission last week from the Department of State to go ahead and name the steering committee publicly. And our contact person, Peter Walsh, is leaving that department and moving to another office in the state, but we will think, and so we'll be assigned a different person. I don't know his name at this point. You?
I do, I don't have a name.
And the members of the committee are going to be, and we've chosen these people both at large and from the Historical Society, the Abidification Committee, and the Landing Committee. They are Mary Rasko, Dick Baker, Nancy Baker, Melissa McManus, Lena Bombadere, Lisa Maschel, Sandy LaBombe, Phil Behrnhoff as recording secretary, Paul Codier as the project administrator, and myself as facilitator. I am a non-voting member, and as is, as is Walsh. So, we have a meeting, it was supposed to be scheduled for next Tuesday, it's got to be postponed until the 17th because we have to, because it's going to be there. We've set out orders to that effect today. And one last item, tomorrow is election day, and I urge everybody, please get out and both is our right and responsibility. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Hopper. Trustee Penfield.
I just have one item tonight. I received a memo from Mike Tatro regarding the issue of the on-ground swimming pools that he had brought before us a couple of times. He included with the memo a copy of a letter from Tom Renee with his comments basically stating that Mr. Tatro is acting in accordance with the New York State Building Code. I think that he's looking for us to make a decision on what our quality is going to be. I think it's really an unfortunate situation because as these pools have become more popular, they become more visible, and as a result of the, a lot of the training sessions for the codes people, the topic has come up more and more frequently, and unfortunately it puts the municipalities in a position of having to make a decision on how to enforce the regulations that are in the New York State Building Code. So, I can understand people's frustration in the village, people who've had them for a long time, and this is the first time that it's been addressed, but nevertheless, I think for us to be in compliance, we need to make some sort of a decision so that he has some guidance to what to do. So, I don't know whether there's any room for compromise on the issue, there certainly isn't in terms of the building code. One thing that we might think about doing is as people apply for permits for the on-ground pools to make things a little less painful is to maybe waive the fee that go along with the permit, and that way it would simply be a matter of having to do paperwork. I don't know what anyone else's thoughts are on this issue.
Well, are we going to get noise from people that already have above ground pools in terms of the rate of urgency? I'm just wondering what.
Well, I think we may, but I think we're also, you know, there are a lot of people in the village who've had these pools in the past, and again, as they become more visible and they become more popular, the issue is now cropping up. So, as with last summer, we had a lot of residents who said, you know, I've had a pool for three or four or five years, and I've never had to do this before, why do I have to do it now? And I can understand their frustration, I think it's a really tough issue. So, could we possibly get some slack? Yeah, we might, but at least for the people who are taking down their pools and putting them away during the wintertime, it's a slightly different situation. So, we would at least have a record of the permit application, but we'd be doing them a favor by not requiring that they have the same fee as the above-ground and in-ground pools. I don't know.
Maybe if you do, if you do that, I would say do it for one year. You know, do it, give them, give everybody a leeway for one year. And whoever already owns one, you're going to come and get a permit, do it for one year and then stop if they have, then after that, then put your $25 fee on.
For the new ones.
For the new ones.
It's fine.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, give everybody a one-year grace period, if you have a pool or if you've had a pool for the last so many years, it's not going to cost you anything, but you have to come in and apply for this permit.
I don't like that $5 fee for the electrical inspection, and there's only two people in the whole Clinton County that can do it. Now, electrician's an electrician. No, 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 that's going to be certified by the National Electrical, and that's an entirely different thing. I've done a lot of.
I know, you know when you put a plug in whether it's right or not. Guys have to do that for a living, now that's not, you know.
I also know that one person in the village spoke with me, called one of these electricians, and he said, I'm not coming up there to charge $5 to inspect that. So, I don't know how, how can we get around that, Mike, one way or the other?
I was at a code meeting last week in the part that was training for us, and the topic was residential electrical. And you don't have to be one of these two inspectors to look at residential wiring. The question becomes, say I'm going to look at it, does the village have to assume the liability, or do I make a wrong decision? Say I didn't know anything about electrical work, or I wasn't qualified, or anybody else. And I asked the instructor that night if that's, because ultimately, the inspector, myself, I have to sign off on these electrical inspectors. I'm approving their work, so I have to have knowledge of what they're doing on residential stuff. So, I asked him, if you have to know all this, why can't we do these additions, pools, pools of the big thing, a lot of other communities were there, Malone has a big problem with them, and you know, they, they had their say about it. He said that as long as the community or the villages and the towns are comfortable with us doing the inspections, because they're assuming the liability on it, that there's no problem. You don't have to have these $5 fees, that's one way out of it. The other way is if you don't assume the responsibility, then like the mayor said, you have to have somebody that's authorized by the electricers association that does these inspections. I hope to answer your question.
Go answer my question, because I don't think the village should assume that responsibility.
Well, if you're going to charge, tell somebody.
No, 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 we're not telling them. State's telling them, you know.
Every time you do any electrical work, you have to have an inspection according to the building code. Not saying everybody does it, but that's the code. If you're going to follow the code, that's what you have to do. Now, those guys set the fees.
But these pools aren't, there's no electrical work being done.
It's where they plug them in.
All they're doing is plugging them into.
Right.
Preferably it's a ground fault breaker from the, on the outside.
That's the big key, to have the ground fault, right? So, in case there's a problem, shut it off.
Most of your, most of your outside.
Plugs are on ground.
Plugs are a ground fault.
Yeah, but they changed the code on what you have to have over the plug now. There used to be a regular weatherproof cover, now they've got a device that it plugs up from underneath, you know, they changed the requirements. Every year there's something new, and it's keeping up with the stuff. So, I mean, you know, you can plug them into a GFI for how many years you were protected and it was safe, now all of a sudden somebody comes along and says, oh, no, this is no good, now you have to have this or you're not safe. So, I mean, where, where does it end?
I can tell you how it gets there. You take a look at your NFBA codes, and you take a look who sits on the committee, right? And who's chairman of that committee? Chairman, not the CEO of the Hubble Corporation, which makes outlets.
I mean, those things change, but you're right, you could plug them into an outdoor GFI and that would be protected.
I heard more people complaining about the $50 for the electrical than the $25.
I don't blame them, I mean, to come down to look at that for $50, that's a lot of money. I mean, I'd be the first one to complain.
So, what can we do about it?
If you have the laws, you got to enforce them, so, you know, I mean, maybe you can waive the fee, but you know.
Well, we can't waive, we can't waive that. We can waive our fee, but we can't waive an electrical inspection.
But that's a third-party inspection.
Now, there's nobody, nobody around here.
Well, there's two out of, one in Lasburg, there's one in Ellingberg, there may be some other ones, I mean, the vice egg has a list of names and or else, but.
You couldn't get somebody here in the village that could do it. I mean, we got electricians right here in the room, I mean, you know electrical, either it's right or it isn't.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if the village wants to assume that liability, that's, that's what's at risk here. And I can't give a certificate of compliance on a pool if either the village doesn't take on that liability, or I have a third-party inspection saying that it's okay, and technically I have to look at it and say that I agree with them that it's okay. If somebody just plugs in a pool and something happens, and there was no permit or no follow-up on it after that, then we're liable.
Lawson City. Let's run it by you in turn.
Really nothing to do. I mean, either you want to, either the village wants to assume responsibility, now, who's responsible? Is the electrical inspector responsible for if something happens?
No, ultimately I would be because I'm approving his work, I'm signing off on it. So, I have to have knowledge of what to do to do his job.
Basically, the village is responsible anyway.
If you're coming right, if you're coming down to that.
So, I mean, you're coming down to it one way or the other.
You got those warriors.
If we get Brian to go in and check, I mean. Instead of an electrical inspector, we have Brian, qualified electrician. I mean, it comes down to basically the village is responsible one way or the other for these pools, correct?
But they could change it half an hour, or two days, or two weeks after, you know, after.
Yeah, he's going to know.
No, no.
Well, yeah, he's going to know.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, he's saying the, the people.
People can change that.
All we're approving is what we see at that, at that hour.
Right.
After that.
Right, if you've got, if you've got Brian saying this is okay, and you've got Mike standing right there, and you've got two people saying it's fine, yes, they can go back and change it, but these two people have just seen that.
Right, it was okay while we were there.
Right.
What happened after that, we have no knowledge.
I wouldn't think people would be messing around with electrical with kids in pools. Well, I don't know.
You do see everything out there.
You're right, nothing surprises people.
They put a lead cord for the lawnmower, and they got it taped up, it's in the mud puddle, the kids are playing outdoors, they don't see the risk.
You want some footage of that, take the picture of it, get it on file.
Take a digital picture.
Yeah. Close that, people have that pool, a resident. Let them be responsible, if they did, if they did change it, then you should, they can make them responsible then, because it comes back on the village. And you've got records of it, and it's.
You're going to keep record of the, you're going to keep record of the permit anyway?
Yeah.
Put a picture with it? I don't know, is that what everybody wants?
I don't know what I can do.
Now, this is only, this is only going to be for the above-ground, the pools that are put away.
Temporary pools.
Temporary pools, not for all, the rest of them are going to go by the code, correct?
I personally don't think that we should change anything about the electrical inspection. I don't think the village has any part in doing that for people. I understand, again, these pools are portable and they're going to be put away, but if you choose to have this kind of pool, then I think you just have to live with the fact that you're going to have to get a $50 electrical inspection. I really don't think the village should be in business regardless of photographs or anything else of doing that for people. I just, I think it's unfortunate, but I don't think that it's part of being controlled.
The sad part of all this whole thing is that the retailer is not telling the buyer these things.
Anyone who's watched our meetings would be aware, so residents of the village should know by now.
I was in Walmart during summer, they had a sale on these things, and I asked the clerk for information about it, and I asked him, do you need a building permit? And the answer was, we don't know, we just sell them. I mean, I asked the clerk, I didn't talk to the manager, this is the information you get over the counter.
Or you answered your question.
Right, right.
Do we want to add to him tonight? Certainly, they're going to put many pools up in the next few months, but we should be ready come spring.
Everybody's feeling, I mean, it's not, feelings aren't going to change from.
I have to hear what you're saying.
No, and I think Mike's got to get letters out to people, he wants to write them letters to let them know what the situation will be next year, and I'm sitting on, so.
We're backing it too much, we're not trying to just shuffle this up.
All I want, whatever you want me to do, I want to do. I don't want to say something and then, you know, get caught in a controversy.
You don't need it.
I think we can wait, I'm.
I think we can wait, I, I would be in favor of waiving the twenty-five dollars fee for the permit, but I think we leave the electrical inspection in.
We need a motion to that effect.
That's my motion, and that Mike can send a letters to the people he contacted this summer and let them know that the building code must be followed and that they do need to apply for the permit, but that they will not have to spend the required fee for it.
Now, what's going to happen? Okay, people apply for this permit. Now, like I said, one gentleman said he went through, he bought, he's got permit. He called this gentleman, he said, I'm not coming up to inspect that. What happens at that point?
I called the inspector after we had that conversation and I asked him, are you or are you not inspecting pools? And he more or less told me that he is inspecting them, that he would inspect them, but these two portable things were something new, which I had a hard time to sort of believe. So, I called a few of my friends around different towns and asked them what they did, just, I wanted to make sure I'm not the only one doing this. And they basically had the same setup, said this is what was going on, but he is going to inspect it and I have seen him since then and I asked him face to face, he says, are you going to inspect them or not? And he said, yes, so.
Maybe he wants to build a few blocks, he doesn't have to come up.
He comes up here once a week, every week, so I, I don't, I got a hard time believing he's making a special trip just to come and see a pool. I mean, there's always something going on.
Any other discussion? Oh, wait, I haven't got a second yet.
I just don't like that liability, right? Oh, he's crazy, waive that liability, I think we should.
We're not waiving.
We're not waiving the liability.
No, but you're saying, oh, you're saying you got to have the fifty dollar fee? Oh, okay.
Her motion was that you.
Yeah, okay.
We're waiving, we're waiving our twenty-five dollar permit fee.
For one year.
For one year. We're not waiving the fifty dollar electrical.
I took more heed over the fifty dollar one than I did the twenty-five dollar one.
Not of our control.
Yeah, I guess, you know. All right, I'll sack it down.
Okay, motion made by Trustee Menard, or Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any other discussion? There being any other discussion, all in favor, vote like you so to sign a bye.
Aye.
No opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield, Trustee Jefferson.
Doug, do you have anything on the sewer? Just on the sewer project, Maple Street reconstruction is moving along. The paver is going to be here Wednesday, they'll start paving one hundred feet south Pine and then start moving north from there. So, by the time we meet in two weeks, we ought to have some good news because most, all of Pine Street, which they made, they should be paved. From Pine south, the wet area, negotiations are underway between the design engineer and the contractor as to putting in additional underdrains so that we can dry that up. And that's the gist of the sewer project. Any questions?
So, we're still on target for the whole street to be paved this year.
By the twenty-first, yeah.
What if they can't dry up the area south of Pine?
If they can't dry it up, then.
For example, they decide not to use the underdrain, what happens then?
What do you mean if they decide not to?
Well, didn't you just say they were negotiating about what's.
We're working on, yeah, what's to go there and, and.
Well, I think it's what, what they'll do as well, not just the cost, right?
It's cost, costing what's needed, you know, and so it's talked about. But if, I mean, if Maple didn't, like, let's say the weather didn't cooperate with us, I mean, worst case, weather doesn't cooperate, Maple doesn't dry up, then that wouldn't get paved. So, unless we decided we wanted to go with a sacrificial layer of asphalt, but I guess we have to weigh that, but that's, that's the worst case. Twenty-first is the magic figure as far as the cutoff to the. Yeah, that's the date that the asphalt batch plan is closing. Ted Locke has stated that he has assurance from the guys plans that they will stay open as long as is needed to make sure that all of Maple is paved. I don't know how much doubt he really has. I figure the twenty-first is probably the date we should see it being paved by.
Can they work on the area south of Pine at the same time they're paving north of Pine? Is that planned, do you know?
You mean, the, work on the, if.
Because I know when they started working, they progressed extremely slowly, starting on the thirteenth of October.
They certainly, whether they do or not, they know what our deadlines are, they know, they know how we feel, but short of, we, we, we can't force them, you know, ultimately to put more crews out there, you know, we can apply pressure and suggest and point out, but ultimately, they're in charge of how many crews they can sign. Certainly, we'd like to see things going simultaneously since it's time to.
How far are they down?
Almost down the speed, aren't they?
Yeah, the rough grading, rough grading is at state, it should be rough graded all the way through Pratt tomorrow. And the fine grading is at in the vicinity of Pearl and White. And so, on Wednesday, they're going to start paving a hundred feet south of Pine and we're thinking that they can go right through to, to Liberty Quentin, hopefully on Monday. All depends on the weather, do you? That's, that's a fact. So, there's.
So, then, then the week or so, they should be.
Major results.
Yeah, there's some happy people in the village.
Well, then, nobody happier than us.
Yeah.
You have a point there.
I just have a couple of things tonight. I spoke with Tom Reed today briefly. Next year, we're going to have to do some upgrades in the sewer plant, horse mane and stuff like that, so we're starting to talk about that. We're looking into just what we need for the upgrades and, you know, we don't want to make this a bigger issue than it is. Some, certain things we've got to abide by EPA and by the state, so of course, we have to be right aligned with that. But we're looking at just what we need because we don't want to spend any more than we have. And of course, again, we don't know what's going to happen with ARIST and with the economy and stuff like that, so we're going to try to hold the line on that. And that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Jefferson. Phil.
I have one thing, kind of in follow-up to the last meeting where I discussed, we focused on hiring Landrock Consulting to help us out with some of our trainings so we'll be in compliance with PESH citations. I spoke to the New York State Department of Labor supervisor down there. I, I'm having a lot of confusion as to really exactly what we need to be sure we're in compliance. And I've requested, subject to your approval, to meet with these people, to have a conference and they have tentatively scheduled it for this coming Wednesday at eleven o'clock in the morning in Albany. And I'm asking you to approve travel for myself. I'd like to bring Brian Pelkey, our public work supervisor, and Carol Antiel with me so we can all be part of this thing, because this isn't going to be just for the current situation that we have, but throughout the village, this is starting to be a trend, I understand, and we just want to get things straight right from the get-go. So, I'm asking for your approval to travel to Albany to meet with these people.
Move it.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Hartro, seconded by Trustee Penfield, any discussion? If there being no discussion, all in favor, vote like you so to sign a bye.
Aye.
No opposed, motion carried. Have a nice trip.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Phil and Brian. Doug?
Something else.
Mike, open the public at this time, anybody wish to address the board, may do so. Knowing of which, I'm wishing to address the board, I close the session and asking for a motion for recess.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Hartro, seconded by Trustee Menard, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, none passed at, well, you can see the clock now.